Okay, we'll call the City Marine City Commission meeting to order on Thursday, June 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to center positive thoughts and prayers to those in the community that need our support. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
City Manager Reeves.
Here.
You, and on to four, approve of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here's on five for presentations, proclamations, or recognitions. We have none this evening. And now we're on to six for public comment. This is a time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the City Commission on any topic. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and be heard. No commissioner, department head, or city staff will respond. City Manager will follow up on public comments as necessary. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please direct all comments to me as the meeting chairperson. Please refrain from the use of profanity, and please do not direct any comments to any other members of the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight?
Well, I'm still taller a little bit than the podium, but not much. Heather Bauchram, and I represent the Historical Society, although I didn't get this approved by them, but hopefully they will. I came tonight to talk about Old City Hall and to make an urgent request to the City Commission. The history of how the restoration of this architectural gem has been mismanaged by the city from the time the city employees abandoned the building about 20 years ago. And it would fill a small book, but recalling the past won't help now. So, on some advice, I looked up some information about how this building could be deeded to the State of Michigan. The building fulfills the requirements that the state would recognize as being a state treasure. There are five things that had to be in place. One, it must be on the National Register of Historic Places in Michigan. Two, the National Register designation would remain in place, and the State of Michigan would have to adhere to the preservation requirements and guidelines associated with that designation. Three, SHIPOL would be responsible for overseeing the property. Four, the City of Marine City would have to initiate the transfer of ownership through a deed. I'll repeat that. The City of Marine City would have to initiate this. Five, both parties sign the deed document to formally transfer ownership to the State of Michigan. Now, you should be able to get all the information on Historic City Hall from members of the Historical Commission, and no time should be wasted. The City Manager, the City Mayor, and the Historical Commission can and should apply as soon as possible to become a certified local government, CLG. It can only help, and this is something I thought had been done ages ago. I was appalled that it wasn't. So, now, what would encourage the State of Michigan to accept the deed to a national historic building? Again, five points are listed. Number one, educational value and research through learning about the history, the architecture, and cultural studies. Two, public benefit and community engagement through events, exhibits, or educational programs, enhancing the local cultural landscape and fostering sense of place. Three, historical significance, its association with important figures or events. For example, the major shipbuilding city in the 1800s on the Great Lakes. Architectural style. Mason and Rice designed the building, who also designed the Gem Theater, the Masonic Temple, and the Grand Hotel on Mackinac Island. And those are just three that I've read about. All of these are of importance in preservation of Michigan's heritage. Four, the potential for fundraising. If the State took the deed of this building, it would attract private donors, foundations, and government grants for preservation, restoration, and educational programs. And five, alignment with the state initiatives. State of Michigan's acceptance of the deed for a national historic building would align with the state's broader goals of preserving cultural heritage, promoting tourism, and economic development. I think, in general, there has been a lack of appreciation of a building of this nature being built in a small town like Marine City. At a minimum, I think that this City Commission... Is that me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm almost done. Sorry. At a minimum, I think that this City Commission owes it to the residents of Marine City to hold off on a vote to sell the building until you have explored this other possibility in full. With all the mistakes and blunders that have been made through the years concerning Historic City Hall, please don't make this your biggest mistake by not researching what I've told you tonight. And I hope you will take this very seriously. And thank you. Sorry for going over the five minutes.
Anybody else like to speak?
Excuse me. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this time to come up here and speak to you. My name is Amy Martinez, and pertinent information about myself for tonight is that I am a resident of the city. I'm a business owner in the city, and I am a registered nurse. As a nurse, it is within my heart and my soul to care about the health and safety of our community and our citizens in the community. So that's kind of what's driving me to do what I've been doing here. Part of my training has included public health nursing, and with public health nursing, one of the first things that you want to do is to complete an assessment of the city, the general health of the population, and, you know, the safety of the community. One of the ways that you can do or begin your assessment is through what's called a windshield survey. A windshield survey is simply driving around town and making observations about things within the city as they relate to the health and safety of the community. You take these observations then, and then you would create expectations about them. For example, an observation is that along the River Walk, there are life preservers. So, an expectation for that observation would be that near open bodies of water, it's expected that there would be lifesaving equipment present. So you have an observation and an expectation. The next thing that you would do after you've completed all your expectations is to determine whether your expectations have been met or not met. For that example, that expectation is met. Good job. It's very safe. It's wonderful to see. Another example of an expectation could be, have the citizens in the community had water safety training? Well, that's not something that I can observe from my windshield, so that's going to require further investigation on my part. Have there been resources available for the community members for water safety, and is it encouraged for our members of the community to take part in that? So again, that's something I would say is not met, simply because I have to do further investigation about that particular expectation. So on May 19th, I did a windshield survey of Marine City, and I have made my report, created a report. And I want to be clear, too, that the information that I've gathered and put together is simply for myself as a community member to see what I can do to be of benefit to the community. This is not a call to action for any of you or any of our other departments here. This is simply what I can do to help. Why I'm bringing this to you is because I just thought maybe you might want to know about it, and you might care. In closing, I would say that with our leadership of our city, our other departments like fire, police, and our Public Works Department, and most importantly, the citizens of the community, good job. Good job on creating a very, I feel very safe and adequate, healthy city. So, thank you. And I have reports available if you would like to look at them.
I think I have 10 here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, if nobody else, then we'll go on to seven for approval of the minutes. The City Commission meeting minutes of May 15th, 2025. I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of May 15th, 2025.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Here's, on the consent agenda, we have 8A, the business license application for Chamberlain Speed and Fabrication LLC. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, item A as presented.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letter A. Support.
Okay, you have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10 for financial business. We have 10A expenditures, including payroll, of $907,262.76. I have a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $907,262.76.
I'll make a motion, we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $907,262.76. Support.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, roll call. Oh.
I'm just telling you, the vast majority of it's all product related. You can see just to the one contractor, well, it was $540,000, but the vast majority of that is all project related.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10B. We have Resolution 12-2025, and this is special assessment for delinquent utility accounts. Can I have a motion, then, to approve Resolution 12-2025, a resolution for special assessments for delinquent accounts related to utility billing, to be placed on the summer 2025 tax roll?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to D for approval of the 2025 tax rate. I have a motion to approve the 2025 tax rate request as prepared and presented.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to D for approval of the 2025 tax rate. I have a motion to approve the 2025 tax rate request as prepared and presented.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11 and unfinished business. We have 11A, the sanitary and storm sewer video inspection approval in Michigan Pipe Inspection.
Thank you, Mayor. So you're going to get a chance to look at two contracts that you had authorized me previously to handle due to time constraints within our water main project. These two are specific to sanitary and storm repairs in addition to the wastewater treatment plan. The water main project remains its own extravagance on itself. I will tell you that as we moved into that, we've discovered additional issues that you've all been aware of in terms of our infrastructure failing, very candidly, in multiple different areas. And in order to make good decisions, we utilized a Saw report that showed us where we have collapses and fractures and non-existent storm sewers anymore, or a cross of what we may believe is a sanitary and storm together. So those need obviously to be separated. So, as part of this process with the sanitary, excuse me, with the Saw report, we originally had them doing just the Saw report, and then we had equipment failures from the VPW and labor issues and fell behind on the cleaning that's required in order to facilitate the camera work. So we had to have them pick up some of the cleaning. In addition, their trucks were better outfitted to do the major cleanings, that's what we call it. As an example, we get a 12-inch pipe, and 10 inches of it was filled with some type of debris. We had a whole section of town had nothing but asphalt billings, and it wasn't allowing any drainage, which caused flooding. So those type of problems had to be taken care of. So I tasked Michigan Pipe Services to not only do the CCTV Saw work, but in addition, some jetback work until we could catch back up and get our machine back up in operation and have personnel to take care of that. So the first contract was to Michigan Pipe. We've used them continuously. The work has been outstanding, and I've utilized them on the daily rate because I didn't want to sign 14 or 28 days at a time, and I was hoping to keep that number down. So right now, they're operating under a daily rate, which is $2,731 for the hour period. That includes mobilization, that includes a standard safety fee for reimbursement of safety things, gloves, face masks, and all the other type of different things with the environment they're working in. And the mobilization fee is to and from the barn, so we're working our way through that. So that would be the first contract that I authorized in this process. I don't know if you want to do these separately or together. I see we have them on the agenda as separate, so we'll deal with the one where sanitary first.
And you would, we would be looking to have a motion to ratify the execution and carrying out of that contract. That's the way I think we would handle it, as we discussed at the last meeting.
Is there anybody, then?
I have a question, though. I know when they were in our neighborhood, I had two neighbors call me because of some water shooting up through the toilet. Are they covered for that instance, if that happens to a homeowner?
They have insurance. I wouldn't necessarily say it's their fault, though.
Okay.
Very candidly, I try to keep everybody abreast. We're having, at times, crises, failures of sanitary and storm systems and the water main. We've done, worked through weekends in terms of valve insertions in order to try to gain the ability to turn down water pressure or insert pipes or make repairs. Just within the last week, we had multiple days, we had three or more water main breaks besides the sanitary collapses and other issues. So I can't say that they were responsible for that. They may have been working on storm, they need on sanitary, we'd have to look at that, but they are insured, we require that, and we have proof of that insurance. Somebody can submit a claim to them, and we can see what happened. We had that issue here in our old city building. We had a crisis, this area was flooded out, and that was from something totally different in terms of...
It was odd, because it was like one in the middle of one block and one in the middle of another block, but their neighbors weren't impacted either, so it was very odd. You know, and it wasn't serious, they both took care of it, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure that if there was something major that...
Yeah, if there's something major, they're insured, we would look at that, but we're having sporadic problems that are rising onto those type of issues throughout the city. And I apologize to the city residents, that's occurred. We have failing infrastructure. We have, and I'm sorry to repeat myself, we have massive infrastructure issues that are facing this community. You know, I've given one instrument of $60 to $100 million with infrastructure issues that we're dealing with. We are dealing with failing wastewater treatment facilities. You will see here shortly, the facilities are studied, done. I've got a number for next year. Be prepared. I don't know how we're going to do that yet. That's just what we need for roofs over our head. So we have to take this, eat that elephant a bite at a time, if you will, and this is that process. And very candidly, what we believed is that this would be the side of town that would be the least expensive and better. We already assumed that the, between the rivers would be worse because it's older and other issues, but we're running into wood piping and other things.
If any of our residents are having these involuntary bidets, who should they, how do they contact to submit a claim? I mean, should they contact the city offices first, or...
I would have them contact me, and we see if we can isolate and determine what caused that. We don't have any Taco Bells close to our vicinity, so I'm not sure what would cause that, but we'll see if we can figure that out. But have them contact the city offices.
It was the one poor gal, she blamed her son until she figured out, the poor kid, it wasn't his fault. So, you know.
Some people pay extra for that, sir.
So, for the inspections, I'm assuming that right now, they're just focusing on the areas that we're doing work in, correct?
That's all we're focusing on, is just in the areas that we're doing work. So, great question. We are not looking in other areas that we believe there are associated issues. Now, if we run into an intersection that we're already seeing problems, I'll use as an example, South Third Street in Charter will be shut down in a matter of a week or so, for a couple days. The entire area has issues. We'll have to just stop work there, and we're going to have shut offs and things of that nature. We're having to go beyond the scope when they open the ground and excavate, we're finding that it's already beyond the scope. So we're going to have to go now, take pavement off and do other things that are outside the project. That's an additional cost.
Yep.
So we're handling those, but some areas that aren't in the water main project, we know there's issues there. I hope to address some of that with lining, and then individually hit those collapses when we determine that.
I mean, I guess my question is, is at some point, do we have a plan to scope the other side of the river? Because I mean, next year, we're going to be working there...
I'm working on that right now.
As well as, at some point, we got to do the rest of it, too, just to see where the bad problems are?
I meet with an engineering firm tomorrow in Michigan Pipe to receive an estimate just for the engineering aspect of it, downloading the Saw, interpreting it, putting it back out in plans, and then reinterpreting it for a contractor to give me a bid on it, and then a total linear foot for pipe lining over the entire project. So I've got one bid just on the engineering piece alone, was $40,000.
Oh, yeah.
So, in terms of Saw and the jetback and that, probably $150,000 on that.
Yep.
So do we have a, do we have a motion to ratify this?
I will make a motion to ratify the contract with Michigan Pipe Inspection. Support.
Any other discussion?
Can we just put the amount?
Is it, do we need the daily amount?
A daily amount, if you would, please.
I'll amend my motion to ratify the contract with Michigan Pipe Inspection for a daily cost of $2,731.
Thank you. And I'll support that.
I think we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now we're on to B, the sanitary and storm sewer repair approval with TR Piperz Act.
Thank you, Mayor. The second part is the repair contract for the area of South Third Street from just north of Ward all the way down to Charter. They are already in the process of repairing both sanitary and storm system components. We have several collapses there that had to be repaired in addition to the total rebuilds of storm, not only manholes, but piping as well. Couple things that I were able to do here is I was able to obtain from the current contractor a unit price bidding in order to apply that going forward against all necessary repairs. So I'll have a standard of what they're going to charge, and then based upon what the Saw sees, I can have an idea, and then I can compare that, engineers can compare that against other known projects to see if I'm getting a good price, or I need to argue about the price a little bit. One of the components of using the people there is that we don't pay for mobilization, the equipment's there, and a lot of this stems out of the original water main project, although we cannot mix them, they have to be separate projects. So that's the first thing we did. For just those streets I included in your packet, we'll call them first the Cutrell Stream Storm, a Street Storm, the Charter and Third Storm, the Bell Sanitary, the Third Street just north of Brown, Storm and Sanitary, Robertson and Third, Bell Street Sanitary, Ward and Third Street Sanitary and Storm. So, at the end of the day, just for Third Street down to Charter, $209,299.60, but we're utilizing that base price. So it may come in cheaper based on what they find when they dig, but also understand that the Saw may say, I need to replace 20 feet of sewer line between Point A and B, and when they get in there, it's only 10. That's a positive for me. They may get in there and say, no, it's 35, that's a negative, I've got to add that. In addition, I had to hire a field inspector in order to determine the quantities that are going in the ground and record for as-built, so the next manager that comes along that has this issue, they'll have proper planage. Then I can also forward that to AEW to put in our GIS planning. So that's not included in this price. So the cost of that contract, as I indicated, was $209,299.60, and that's to repair one street, approximately four and a half pipe blocks. Any questions you may have, I'll be happy to answer.
I will make a motion to ratify the contract with TR Piperz Act for $209,299.60. Support.
Okay, no other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 12 for new business. We have 12A, Resolution 14-2025, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act.
All this is, allows us a yearly process to utilize, to avoid the hard cap for medical costs for employees.
It's a mandatory resolution.
Mandatory. I'd like you to see that. Thanks, bud.
Right. Can I motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rurg.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Carrion.
Okay, on to twelve B, the Pilot Group Listing Agreement, three hundred Broadway.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to walk you through a little bit of the process and the mindset on this. I know I've talked about this a little bit, but I want to reiterate the thought process that I've taken, in terms of approaching this issue. So, that building's been vacant for twenty-one years now. Numerous groups and committees and others have attempted to do some things with the building, and come up with a fundraising arm, or a grant writing arm, or maybe perhaps even try to do some of the work themselves. The building was just included in a facility assets study by the group that did all the facilities, and I'll have that report soon to you, and that'll be IOP. In addition, you had a twenty-five thousand dollar engineering review of that building, that this board authorized, in order to take an additional look, beyond the other eight engineering reviews you had in the past, to look at that building, to see what it would take to bring it up to today's standards. Not to provide a business plan, or return on the investment, but just to bring it up to today's standards at a minimum. The goal, my goal has been continuously to try to find a way, a person, a group, developer, an idea, to save that building. Okay? That has been the, it's not to tear it down, it's not to give it away, it's not to do anything else, other than to try, as the first project, the first one A step of this is to try to save the building. In looking back over the history, we've done a lot of work locally, in terms of spreading the information about that building, and maybe even in St. Clair County, we've talked to a lot of groups, and we've talked to the state here and there, and we've got this registered, and we're trying to get this one, but very candidly, nothing's ever finished. Nothing, we start a lot of stuff, nothing's ever finished, nothing's ever completed, nothing's ever done. I have called around and spoken to multiple large-scale developers in the state on projects like this, and I made you aware of the track, the state mental hospital in Traverse City, which is a historical building that was taken on by a developer, Mr. Maneri, and I talked to him and his family, for quite an extent, they looked at this building, I sent them the plans, I sent them everything, amongst many others. I've had developers that have gone through that building, looking, searching for that business plan, and I want to tell you a couple of things, that they asked me about this. The first thing is, they want to know what local, state, county, or federal programs, or incentives that will be made available, or that the city will participate in, in order for them to take a look at that project. They include Mishta, Shepo, Tifa, Brownfield, tax abavements, waiver of taxes, or what kind of cash infusion the city's willing to do. That's one of the things, the first things they ask me. In order to try and save the building, you have to put it in the forums, in the area that developers will look at, especially when you have a historical building. We don't have that ability to do that from Marine City, or from St. Clair County, and very candidly, we need to fish in a bigger pond than the state of Michigan to find that right developer. They may exist here, but very candid, the majority of the state doesn't know about this building. The only reason to start this process this way, by listing the building, is to attract development. Let somebody see this across the nation, if you will, in these different pools that they operate, to see this project, and somebody that has the wisdom, but has the resources to ask the right questions, and let them come up with some ideas. Let them come up with, ask the questions that are great in order to save this building. Would you, as an example, would you consider this, or have you looked at that, or we see this as a potential, what would the city think of that, or what are A, B, and C in regards to this building? The idea is to get the message out, and we're doing a poor job of that. I can't do it by phone call and email across the state, trying to look up people, buildings, and say, hey, you've taken care of three historical building developments, would you like a fourth? That's a poor business manner to approach things. So, in order to save the building, you got to put it in the forums, where developers will have an idea where it's at, and they can look at it, and they can pull documentation, they can pull the business plans, they can look at the drone videos, they can look at the interior. We can set up due diligence for things. They have an ability to get an idea about the building, about the city. We include all that information, and then they bring options. They bring public options, they bring public-private options, they bring totally private options, they may bring a land development option with no build, I have no idea. One of the problems we have with that building, is we can't assess a true value for the building. Okay? And I tried. It was even difficult to assess the land value. Spoke to several of these brokers, who suggested, when you have a difficult time finding comparables that would be within the realm of an apples to apples, or one fruit to another fruit, at a minimum, allow the marketplace to set the values. Let people tell you what they think the building's worth. Let the market tell you, the building is worth five million dollars, or five hundred thousand dollars, or the land's worth meat, whatever it is, let the marketplace give you an idea of what the value is, based on what they see the potential or the development to be. Rather than trying to take a stab in the dark, and you putting a price stake on something, or trying to make some type of determination, you go way low or way high, or you turn people away, just based upon your lack of knowledge of what that should be. One of the things that people looked at, is in every instance, I've talked to somebody across the state, besides that local incentive, their next question is, Mike, I don't get my return on this investment. Let's say I take your numbers, I agree with you, let's say your numbers are good, twelve million dollars. I've got to come up with a business plan, how do I get my return? And I don't just need twelve million, but at a minimum, twelve million dollars, how do I get twelve million dollars back out of the building? I don't have that answer. I don't have that answer, but that's one of the things they look at, in terms of putting that development together, how do we get our money back out of the building? What gives us, don't have to have it all upfront, right? You put in a housing plat, you get it over so many years, but they want to see, how do they get the return for the investment? So, that's a major point. What I have learned, is we are already beyond what's called a diminishing return on the building. You've waited too long. You're losing value in chunks now, and continuing to wait, you continue to lose value. One thing I want to make to you clear, if you decide to do this tonight, or whatever you decide to do, you maintain control, irregardless of what you do. If you agree with me, and say, I think we'll see what the world says about this building, it automatically comes back to you, irregardless. Let's say they wanted to put up a circus tent, you said, no, I don't want a circus tent there. You get the right to say no. Or what if they say, I want to put a hotel and boutique, and whatever, and they want to keep the building? You could say yes, or you could say no. You always maintain control at the end of the day. It has to come back to you. You don't have to sell. What if somebody comes back and says, I'll give you a dollar? Dollar for the building, dollar for the property? It's ridiculous, right? My mind, at least, you could say no. So, you maintain control, irregardless. Another thing is, you have the ability to do multiple things at once, and that's part of the problem I've seen in the history, you've always tried to do one thing at a time. Well, we're going to go for grants, okay, we're going to study, then we're going to go for this state license, and then we're going to ask these people here, and then how many years did you wait for a business plan? And if you had a business plan, how does that equate to the twelve million to get the building up to standards? And then what does the business plan do to repay the twelve million? What I have learned is that the building, tax-wise, has been turned down twice, and my opinion only, based on what I see from a city manager's perspective, with the infrastructure issues that we have, and the current budget situation we have, I have no funding available for this building. There's not, there's not a way present, I can't, I can't stop enough city services to fund the building. I can't generate the police, the fire, I can't, I can't do it. DPW, in some cases, especially DPW, I can barely keep up with what we have. So, literally, the options of the city continuing to operate the building, even for maintenance pieces, one of the furnaces is going out, it's got a roof issue again, we had busted a water line there last week, fire suppression issues again. I mean, I don't have the funds available, and when you get those facility studies, hang on, folks, when I talked about having a hundred dollars, and five dollars to each pool, we're going to have to do a hundred dollars, two fifty to each pool, because literally, some of the things that they found are million-dollar items. What I would get to at this point here, is you need to keep any option open. Nobody wants to talk about demolition, I'm not talking about demolition, I think we're a long ways from demolition. Let's see what options other people have, that specialize in these type of buildings, in a public, in a public-private, in a pri, let's see what we can find to maintain and keep the building. And if the search provides that, outstanding, great. If we find a steward for the building that allows that to happen, I'm thrilled. And if we don't, then we determine, okay, what do we do from here? If we get absolutely nothing, then you've got more decisions to make. There's housing issues you could do with that building, a lot of the developers talked about housing. There's light commercial you could talk about. One of the things that you don't really have an option in, is kicking the can down the road. And I'll circle right back to the infrastructure issues. Many on this board never kicked at that can with these infrastructures that you're having to deal with now, but here it is, on your desk, tabletop now, and you're having to deal with it. I don't think that anybody here will allow you to kick that can down the road, and say, we'll just let it sit for another five years, just a couple of years, we'll study it somewhere, just another year, and it'll turn into twenty-one years. Election has responsibility, and I know you all understand that. I think it's imperative that you make a decision, do more than one thing at a one time. I talked to you about our financial capability. If you, I think the Pilot Group has done a good job, in terms of understanding the issue, they're the ones that sold 303 Water, you've employed them previously, I talked to Pilot, I talked to Signature, I like to talk to the firms that have a nationwide presence, or have the ability to participate in a nationwide scope of this well. I think this gives us an opportunity to get it out there, beyond there, and in the meantime, I can look at other, I continue to look at other options, I can continue to talk to people. I can look at the state, be happy to do that. The first question I ask the state is, what's your business plan? How quickly will you take my tax money, and the citizens of Marine City's tax money, and invest it in that building? What will you do to upkeep it? What will you do to cause immediate repairs? Or will it sit for five years, or three years? I mean, those are some of the questions I'd ask, but I'd be happy to look into that, more than that. And I'll continue to explore grants and that. There's not a grant that I've found, anybody that'll look at the building in its current condition, for granting purposes, and say, yes, we'd like to invest in that. I'm open and available for questions, comments, thoughts, ideas?
I'm actually quite worried that, I mean, the plan you're laying out, Mike, makes a lot of sense, but I'm worried with what I've found, that we're actually opening ourselves up for a lawsuit by listing it. And if we list this, and we actually find a potential buyer, that's actually offering us a solution, and they move forward with it, and we get an injunction on the property, it can actually, well, we've seen what happens when we get an investor, and people just on Facebook starts scaring them away. I can't imagine what a lawsuit with the city is going to do. Actually, I've pulled a couple of research materials, if you don't mind grabbing one and passing these down. In this packet, we looked at this information back in two thousand and seven. The first piece in here is from the former acting city manager in two thousand and seven, asking the lawyers at the time about selling the property. At the time, the lawyer found two conclusions, one, that we don't have the capacity to sell the property, we should lease it, and the problem in selling it, is that it's actually a park. There's two plat mats that this lawyer looked at, that listed this property as a park, and there's actually a third in our local museum, from a different year in the eighteen hundreds. But basically, as it's been operating since then, it's been a park, and it calls out, on the bottom of the paragraph on the first page there, from the Michigan Compiled Laws, one seventeen point five, the Home Rule Cities Act, that we don't have the power to sell a park, if it's essentially listed in the master plan. This is in our master plan, with steps on what we are going to do about this. And as we move a little bit deeper in the packet, I pulled the two charter references that the lawyer makes, including, and in addition, the Home Rule City Act, with the excerpt, point E, about the difficulty in doing this. Now, I did pull the draft excerpts, they're the same as the final version, but I didn't have the final version in time, of the master plan and Parks and Recs Plan that we recently passed. It includes a couple of different items, I just pulled the pages relevant here, it's not everything about three hundred Broadway, but it's something we need to keep in mind. First and foremost, that the public put an input on this master plan, what they wanted done with three hundred Broadway, and we passed that master plan. We always knew that these were living documents that we may edit, but we haven't talked about deviating from the master plan, and what that means for us, as we move forward. Finally, the last section that I pulled, is from the Local Historic Districts Act. Mr. Davis, I would need your help interpreting this. As you all know, I am not a lawyer, but what I understand in this, is that a historic district is given governance to the historic commission, that's essentially established to oversee it, and in this, that we have to actually get the historic district permission, or, I'm sorry, the historic commission permission, to sell the property. There are certain situations, like financial hardship, which this probably would fall under, but under financial hardship, we have to exhaust all resources in order to do this. There's a couple other points throughout this section, especially Section eleven, about what a historic commission is supposed to do with the owners of a property, which in this case, would be us, and how they can actually compel us to act over that property. My worry here, is that between the layout and the master plan, is that we will have an open hearing with the stakeholders. It included by name, the three hundred Broadway Committee, which no longer exists, but the other stakeholders and community organizations, we haven't done that, we haven't had a public space of communication with these bodies, as to what we're going to do. And so whether, and the Home Rules Act can actually lead this towards a vote by the public, as if we can sell it or not, my worry is, this may be the plan we need to go with, I agree quite seriously, that getting it listed can get that national interest, and get someone on the line, that can open up both the value and the options we have with this. I'm worried, because the sales document, the contract we're looking at, doesn't include leasing in its language, it only includes sale. If we find someone, and one of these community groups push back aggressively, we get an injunction, we have to defend if it's a park or not a park, if we can sell it, or if we have to go to our historic commission, what that would look like, could really mess up that process. I take your point, that we have messed this up till now, and that we're kicking the can down the road if we don't do something, but if we also act rashly, like a heavy hammer, we might open ourselves to worse repercussions and problems.
I will tell you, I did research, I apologize, oh, may I go or no?
Go ahead.
I did research the park plan, and I was aware of the master plan. The master plan can be amended, it can be removed from the master plan, as is, the board has the authority to decertify a park. I did look into both those, I'm aware of that already, in terms of all the, I don't pretend that my law degree is rented, so I'll let Bob answer most of those questions, but I am aware of those, the information I have received, that those are not fatal things. I think we're stuck on the sale of the building, versus the attraction of development, in terms of having other people get to that, but...
And I will say, that's just because repeatedly, in this pilot property, exclusive right right to sell listing agreement gives them the sole exclusive right to show an offer for sale of the described property. Now, that's offer. It's not that they get to sell it on their own. But, I, and I, these types of contracts are new to me, but it doesn't include something like lease, and I don't know if that means they can even discuss with a group if lease is an option as opposed to...
I did talk to them about lease, and the first thing they said to me is, is, okay, if we bring your lease, are you willing to put twelve million dollars into the building to bring it up to standards so it's available to lease? And the answer is no.
However, I, again, I, not having this material in there, and what happens, we haven't gone through the master plan discussion, we haven't decertified it as a park. Those aren't, and are agendas for the public interest.
Can I, I'd like to point out one thing here. We went through this whole process with the old Guy Center. It's no different. The Guy Center is in a park. The Guy Center was put up for sale through them. The city also gave twenty-five feet of parkland that was behind, right?
Right.
Behind that property. It was removed from the master plan so that all that could take place. I mean, I wasn't for selling that building, but it went through with no issues.
That doesn't mean this is going to go through new issues.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that it's, it can be done. I mean, these are, things change and, and, but, but I'm willing, my thing is, we've been sitting here for twenty-one years waiting for something. And, and I get that this probably isn't always the best, but we have to at least make an attempt to try to save that building, and this may be our only option.
Of course. I would like this to go through the proper process. We need to have the discussion about it being on the master plan or removing it. We need to have a discussion about decertifying the areas of park if we're going to do this. We need to understand fully if we actually have the capacity to list it for sale, or if we have to ask permission of the historic commission, as the historical, um, act lays out here in the back of the packet, the Local Historic Districts Act. I want to do those items in order before we would list it for sale, so that we're not misstepping. I think one of the things that's happened before is that we've rushed a process, and then we can't follow through because we rushed it. We didn't do it properly from the beginning.
Mike, is there any additional cost to the city to list it?
No.
And the national exposure that we can get through this group could actually bring an organization to us that potentially could want to rehab that building, and we still keep it.
Could, and, and very candidly, there's no sale on the board, so I would be, I'd give caution about amending your master plan and decertifying a park. What if, nobody comes out with this, and then you've already done that process?
So, part of this... We, we have done that. If, if, yeah, if you remember, it was, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, somewhere in there, we had an investor come and take a peek at it, and we did remove it from the master plan. It took a couple months, but it wasn't a very painful exercise, but it's not, it's not a huge thing. And then I think it was put back in the master plan several years later, once that fell apart. Thankfully, that one did fall apart, but, so, I mean, it, it's not an insurmountable thing. I mean, me personally, I want to save that building in some form or fashion. I, I would like us to list it and see what options are out there. No one's saying we're agreeing to one, but I would like to list it. And parallel to that, I'd also like us to take a peek at the state route of potentially deeding it over. Maybe they want it, maybe they don't. If they want it, are they going to put enough money into it to at least stabilize it, to keep it from meeting a bulldozer five years from now? Because if you don't put some money into it now, that's where it's headed. But I, I, you know, I don't think we can wait to do one, then the other. We need to do parallel paths.
Yeah.
The way I understood this is, we're looking to see what someone would offer us for it. And in real estate, you can put a house on listing, and you don't have to sell it. You can pull the listing, you can, we're, we're trying to get somebody interested in, tell us how much they, they would pay for this building, if I understand.
And what they would do with it.
And, and that's what I would recommend. It's been a long time.
So, this, this area of the law and the master plan is a little different than normal. It's, it's not whether it's in the master plan, that's the question. It's whether the master plan requires this property to be a park. There's a little subtle difference in the statute in 117.5. The statute reads that you can't sell, you cannot sell a park, you're correct on that, except in circumstances, and then the circumstances is where it's required to be a park in your master plan. I don't know in our master plan, I haven't looked at this issue, but whether we have any of our parks that we require be a park. We have them as parks. I'm not sure we've designated any of our parks as required to be a park. So I'd have to look at that. I'd have to study that statute more, but my recollection is, is that if you read the language, it says, except where required to be a park in your master plan. So when we looked at the sale of that other park property, we didn't find any language that made it a requirement that it remain a park. So you cannot sell it if it's still on your master plan, so we removed it, you know, from the master plan. I, I don't, I see what you're saying, that, that, you know, you're, you're, you're getting into a listing agreement. I agree with Bill that you're not bound to do anything just because you list the property. I thought we were doing this just to learn, just like we should study what you said to learn. And I think everyone in the room would agree that we shouldn't just study one thing.
Right.
I can look at this, that you've handed me your legal research.
A little bit.
You're, you're now my clerk.
Not yet.
My assistant, paralegal. Um, no, I'll take a look at it, but I, I do, I do think, I, I wouldn't rush out and take it out of your master plan, you know?
Correct.
Because we keep doing that.
Yes.
I would take a look at what the law says about whether or not this particular land is required to be a park.
So, I, I want to be really clear about what my concern is here. By listing it for sale, by skipping the, one of the steps we promised in the master plan of bringing those community groups together to have, like, open space to talk about what we're going to do with this, or what the options are, that we're going to encourage one of those groups to file an injunction.
I see what you're saying, but...
Because of these questions could be up in the air.
Wouldn't the answer, wouldn't the answer be that this is part of the process of learning what we could possibly do with a property?
Correct.
And the city, I think, just like we owe a, a duty to look at your deed it to the state, we owe a duty to probably look at what other people, on a national basis, think this property.
And, and I think that if you have that community meeting, it's going to be far more, oh, sorry, the word just escaped me. It's going to be far more helpful, and it'd be a much more productive meeting if...
If you have this information.
If you have options to present, instead of, what do you think we should do? If you present, here are the options, here's what each one looks like, or may, hopefully there's at least one, but if, if it's just a, a meeting for brainstorming, I, I think we're past that. We, I think we need to provide options, and we, you know, then we can have that community meeting and see which way everyone wants to go, but we need to provide concrete options on the table, is what it's going to look like.
You, you may be at that meeting, and you may say, we put it out nationally, and we got nothing.
Yeah. Right. I, I think if we're going that route, we need a very clear commitment that we're going to have that meeting with those groups and stakeholders, and I don't think there's a lot of trust in the community right now that we're going to, because they've not been involved very much in the conversation of late, and we're going with the sale listing. And that's, that's where I think that legal action on their part could come up and become viable.
I understand that concept of, of not being, uh, having meetings, but I would reject your idea that there hasn't been meetings. You've had multiple committees that have had this for years and years.
We have not had the Arts History and Culture Commission actually meet yet, which is bound in their term.
We can't fulfill the members.
But it says in there that they would oversee this, right? And we dissolved the 300 Broadway Committee with a promise, or at least verbal indication, that they would be continuing that work in that space. And so, like, it, it should be apparent to this body why those groups may not feel that they can trust the direction we're going in with this, without at least giving them a commitment that we'll actually do that hearing before we make a decision to sell the property.
Has anybody from those, those groups reached out to the, to the, to the city?
No.
So, so again...
I mean, we kind of have some here tonight that have reached out.
Well, well...
Go ahead.
I've been here a long time, and I've sat through this for a long time. I was here when they moved out of the building. I was here through all these things, all these groups. We've been promised money to maintain it, we've never gotten, we've been promised all sorts of things. We had the state out here maybe thirteen years ago, I went on that tour. The state people, all the reps that came, said that they don't think we'll ever get any money for it. We've tried for the grants, we've tried for all sorts of stuff. We've had a lot of meetings on this. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of things that, yes, went wrong, but a lot of that was from some of the groups that were working on it. I mean, the exterior of that building was all done incorrectly. We spent a million and a quarter on that part, and all that was discussed, and I was at all the meeting, I was on here when all that was taking place. So, there's been discussions for twenty-one years on this, and I get it, but you have to, he's right, you have to look at every avenue that you have. This is one, what she's giving us is one. I tried looking into that, a lot of that I saw was that, that they're talking loans and stuff, and we can't go to the public...
We need to do research more.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I'm, I read the state's shipo site and all that on there, but anyway, there was different things. But the, the problem is, um, you know, I know everybody wants to save it, and I do too, it's been there for so long, but you gotta go through every process, and the only way we're going to know that we've covered every base is to do this, and to look at that one, and, and to look at anything else that anybody else out there brings us. But you can't stop now and say, well, we're going to have this meeting, because I've seen those meetings, and then what happens in that meeting is, oh, now we have to go research this and that, and now we have to wait for another meeting, because we're, you see what I'm saying? I understand it, and it's all going to go to that committee that also is just an advisory committee, and the city has always given all the information to those committees, I can tell you that. It, it has. All the information.
So, is, is, you know, I, I see both points here, but, but if we held the meeting, let's, let's say we, we're going to have your, the meeting you're talking about tomorrow night.
Yeah.
We would go to that meeting, and we would probably say, well, we're thinking of researching deeding it to the state.
Yep.
But we don't know about that yet, so we don't have anything to tell you.
Yep.
We're thinking about trying to attract private development and other remedies, but we haven't sent it out yet. So what would we talk about?
Oh, clarify, a statement I made moments ago that's been heavily overlooked. I think that we need to give a guarantee that we're going to have that meeting after the listing research, before we sell.
After we have this information.
And if we don't, and, and that's after stating that, we got a lot of pushback, we can't even have this meeting.
I don't think...
We need to make that commitment that we're actually going to have that meeting.
Oh, no, I, I agree to make, wait, wait, Mike, did I not send you a, a document today saying that we should have a town hall, and we should have, uh, surveys, and we should have other things?
But we need something to present at that.
Exactly.
Yeah. Brian, I, why do I always call you Brian?
Oh, Brian, it's that you're dropping the O, it's okay.
Um, I think, I think the board is resolute on having the meeting, but they want to be able to say something at the meeting.
We have to have facts.
Right. So, sending an email with, with a document, and this is great, but the public's not hearing it, those bodies aren't seeing this. So I think we need to make a very open, very public commitment that that's the intention. We are not going to sell this property without having a public hearing, a town hall, and a proper process.
Totally agree.
And if we don't make that commitment verbal, loud, and multiple times, they have no reason to trust us, and they have very, every reason to distrust us at this point.
And I think, I think the flip side of that, we're not going to deed it to the state without having that meeting.
Of course.
Correct.
So we want to be able to have... At this point, we're, we're looking to get what someone would offer us, the property.
Yeah.
So I...
Or ideas.
For ideas, and I think we should call the vote.
Well, you can add into the motion that this and looking into the state, you know, we would, we would hold a public meeting, uh, when we have all this information gathered.
Correct.
And put it in, put it in your motion, so the...
Yep.
So it's part of the motion.
And I think we all pretty much agree, we, we need to do multiple things in tandem.
And get some information.
Get some information, bring it all back.
Surveys.
Town halls. Absolutely. We may find that the national exposure, there might be a group, organization that wants to come in and help us, we just don't know.
I would say one last thing, and then I'd be happy to make a motion so we can move on. But I understand that the, that the committees might not have trust, or think that this and that won't happen, but in the few months that I've been here, I've not seen anybody attend a meeting, with the exception of today, to come forward to talk about the 300 Broadway. So if the concern is there, they can't just sit in the back pew and be uncomfortable and be frustrated without having come here to raise that concern, unless, unless you're all of their spokesperson. At the end of the day, our job as commissioners is to get the city back to where it needs to be, and to continue to say, we have to do this if we're going to upset these, people are going to be upset no matter what you do. It, it doesn't, you could put a bow on that building and say it's yours to do what you want, and somebody's going to be upset. At the end of the day, we need, we need to move forward. So, I will make a motion to allow Mike to go ahead and do what he needs to do to, to, to bring in listings, or to, to do the listing. Maybe you can help me with the, my wording here.
So, your, your motion is to go forward with the pilot listing to get ideas on how to use the property, and further research the state deeding issue, and when all that information is gathered, to schedule a public meeting to air it out.
Did you get all that, Jason? Because that is what my motion is.
He's still working.
Exactly what you just said.
I'm right, I'm right in your mind. But that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
Yes.
I will support that.
Okay. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Bishop Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Carey.
So the folks should be aware, there's a unanimous support to conduct that public meeting and present information.
Thank you.
And we're going to research Young Heather's idea.
I do it for you by birth, but I'm not, I'm not...
We'll, we'll take a moment.
Twelve C, we're up to termination and release of the easement for the Zaramba Group, Dollar General. Page one.
We're very close to breaking ground of the Dollar General product. This allows, uh, termination of some old easements, and allows us an additional easement for a water line that we requested, just a cleanup of the plat there.
Is there anything on that easement now?
We don't know. But, but no is the answer. So, we, we, we worked with them just to reserve an easement in case, as a backup.
It's needed, okay.
And not, not forfeit all of our easement rights, and everyone agreed.
Okay.
Thank God, a motion to approve the termination of easement for the Zaramba Group for property with parcel number seven four dash zero two dash ninety-five dash zero zero six dash zero zero one.
So moved. Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Bishop Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
And to administrative reports, thirteen, we have thirteen A, the city attorney report.
Uh, sorry I missed the last meeting. The, um, speech that I gave on the west side of the state was well-received, there was five hundred and four people gathered in one audience. Uh, I did get to say Marine City, uh, I worked it in, uh, as, as my, as my buzzword. Received a lot of positive impact, got a personal call from the governor, so it all Received a lot of positive effect, got a personal call from the governor, so it all went pretty well on what is probably going to be a subject matter that'll work its way to this city sooner or later under the county management program. So, it went, it went well, and I, I had plans on driving back and getting here, and I got waylaid by, just, just got bombarded with a lot of questions after the one hour lecture, so. Yeah, it was good.
City manager?
Thank you. I think I've updated you enough on the water main project. I tried to send you a little tidbit during the week in terms of issues we're having. You should all be receiving the outlook for what we see in the next week coming. In addition, I did take a little look, a quick look at the water pool credits issue. I think that needs some research and discussion, maybe in a couple months when we get the water rates, I'll toss it in there, but there are, it's, it's much more deeper discussion than what may be on social media in terms of what's actually happening out there in terms of impact, and, and, I mean, if we can do something, I, I understand it, but I want you to have all the facts before you, you decide to wade into that water, because I think you might find some of the, the information we found out regarding that program helpful to you when you make decisions. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Here we have reports from department heads, and we have several today. Fire chief?
Good morning.
Police chief?
City manager Reeves, did you update them on the grant?
It was in my report, Tim.
And patrol cars?
That was in my report as well.
Then I have none. How's it, Mary?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Clerk Powell?
Nothing this evening, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you. All right, we're on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
We didn't have a planning commission meeting. We have one coming up this month, so I'll let you know what's going on there. The, the last thing we had was the storage facility up there at the Plaza, at the end of, at the, at the end down by VG. That's all I have, and I want to, we've had a lot of family things, and I want to just say we're, we're sorry that that happened. So, that's all, I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner May? Commissioner Rourke?
I don't have anything either.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Okay, I do for once. I'll, I'll keep it brief.
Well, that was going to be a roll there.
Sorry, I had to screw that one up. The Memorial Day Parade, the Lions Club, we all chip in, and we helped do the mess tent for Jesse White and the veterans. So, I want to thank VG's, they gave us the 400 hot dog buns, the Marine City Grill, she donates the 400 hot dogs. Tim's Party Store, he donates all the water and the ice that we need. I want to thank the police department for all their help. Jim and his wife came, he was cooking hot dogs. Fire department, he cuts the onions and he brings all our stuff down and helps us out. The DPW for all the setting everything else up. All our volunteers, the city manager came, we had a lot of people there. We put him to work cooking hot dogs also. And what it does is, we give them away free, and then the donations we get, people give us, we use those for the flags on the graves for the next year. So, we try to do that. So, I want to thank everybody who came down and did that and helped out, and we did pretty good, and like I said, that goes towards flags for the next year's parade. So, I just want to thank everybody for that. And I want to thank our city manager for this report. It's 12 pages long. People have no idea how much work goes into all the stuff, and these are every two weeks. And the, I, I've never seen the volume of information. I appreciate it so much, it keeps us up. You just have no idea how bad our infrastructure is and what a mess things are, and we're not the only city that's facing that. All the cities surrounding us are, we were lucky to get one grant, and I know he's trying for more every day. A lot of these other communities, they're getting nothing, and so the cost is going to be on them. I mean, when you look at the water thing, it would have been, what, $180 a month? And with that grant, it got us down to $10 a month. I mean, that's a huge savings to the people. So, I know everybody complains. I'm living in the construction, I got the dust every day, and the dirt and the mud. You just got to deal with it till they get done. They're working as hard as they can to get this stuff done. So, just try to be patient, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a couple quick things. Thank you to Jesse White and everybody who helped with the Memorial Day Parade and the ceremony. Congratulations to the Marine City Varsity Boys Baseball. They won the district championship, and now they're going to play the regionals at 10 o'clock Saturday in Millington versus the Millington Cardinals. So, good luck to them on that.